Ready.
All right, welcome to the Des Moines City Council Workshop for Monday, July 23rd. We're going to start out this morning with a mobile home park update. Mr. Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to turn it to Sue Ann Donovan. She's got a presentation for you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Sue Ann Donovan, Zoning Enforcement, Neighborhood Inspection Division Administrator. We were asked several months ago by council to do a review and a report on two mobile home lots within the city of Des Moines. One is the Oak Hill Mobile Home Park, which is on Indianola Park, and the other is Radio City on East 14th. As a result of that request, staff did an intensive research of the history of the ordinances that affect the parks, researched the history of the parks when they came into existence. We did an inspection of the parks. We did a limited review. We did not get into any mobile home parks. We did exterior reviews of conditions. The staff time we utilized to get to this point was about 40 hours of field inspection time for each park. Should be noted that that was a combination of different inspection units. We used zoning, Neighborhood Inspection Division, and some building inspectors onsite. What we did is we mapped the site. We did separation between units, figured out how close they were, what setbacks they had from streets, internal roadways, and then we documented that in our mapping system. That included about 25 hours of office time, mainly doing historical research, zoning ordinance research, and looking at aerials to determine what conditions the parks were in when they were established and what they look like now. The problem with health and safety, significant to both parks, are limited spacing between the trailers and the accessory buildings and structures that have been added on to increase the floor area within the mobile homes. Residents' vehicles and other obstructions on the narrow internal streets limit accessibility for fire trucks and ambulances. The structures have been altered and may not be in compliance with the HUD standards, which would have controlled what they were constructed like when they rolled off the manufacturing plant, but then they've been altered, so we have some building standard requirements that haven't been met with alterations. Fire department concerns are what could happen if there's a fire in there and it starts to spread. The accessibility challenges and limited water supply with the fire hydrants in mobile home parks are two tactical difficulties that face the fire department. The caption below the picture of the fire damage mobile home is an accurate depiction of what can happen if we do not have adequate water supply or cannot get reasonably close to the structure when it starts to burn. Inspection results specific to Oak Hill, there are 34 units in this park. They're all rated in poor condition based on review of exterior conditions of roof, walls, additions, and alterations. And again, these determinations were made by staff who do inspection routinely of buildings and structures in the city. Most of the accessory structures are in poor repair. The additions onto the structures are in poor repair. In fact, it was calculated that 29.4% of the additions could not be removed without substantial damage to the mobile home unit itself. Most did not meet setbacks or separation requirements. That would be setbacks from city streets and separation requirements from trailer to trailer or accessory structure to accessory structure. History of Oak Hill, from 1941 to 1952, the property was termed a tourist camp. Back then, they were structures that people drove their cars up to as they went across the United States. In 1955, the use was reestablished as a trailer park. So the ordinances in place when this mobile home park came into existence were in 1955 ordinances. Back then, we had an ordinance specifically for trailer ports. That would have been Chapter 39. We also had a Chapter 2A, which were zoning regulations. When you apply those in combination and using the most restrictive standards, that's what we looked at for setbacks and requirements within the park. We found there was a lack of required 35-foot setback along Park Avenue, a lack of required 12-foot setback along Indianola. The reason that the setback along Indianola appears to be smaller is there was a widening of Indianola, and so we took that property. So we're just using the remaining that would need to be there on that property. They lack required side yard, rear yard setbacks. They lack a 15-foot required space between trailers. The additions to the trailers and other porches and entryways, they were supposed to be 11 feet between these additions. They don't have the 11 feet either. This is a picture of the zoning map. If you put the overlays, what it would be if to bring it into compliance, those would be the zoning setbacks that would be required. Additionally, we did a Radio City inspection effort. The total number of units in that park were 137. For time constraints, we only looked at 64 units within a specific area, using the analogy that the rest of the park looks the same, so it's probably in the same condition. 45% of those trailers were rated in poor, below-average condition. There's a failure to meet the setbacks from East Seneca, failure to meet the required setbacks from internal streets and property lines, failure to maintain an eight-foot separation between units. It should be noted, when we looked at Oak Hill, the separation was 15 feet. When you looked at Radio City, when you looked at the ordinances in place, it was only eight feet, and even that isn't being met. 54.14% of the accessory structures are rated poor or below average in condition in Radio City. Radio City's history, in 1947, Ariel Shell was vacant. 1948, the mobile home park was constructed. Therefore, ordinances in place during construction would have been 1947. In 1941, again, we had the Chapter 39 specific to trailer parks. Again, there were ordinance changes from the eight-foot to the 15-foot over time. In 1942, we had district height and area regulations within the city code that would cover the zoning portions. In 1967, a portion of the property was rezoned to R-5, and that portion would be required to meet the R-5, and there are trailers on that portion that have a different standard to be met. This is the Radio City zoning map. The R-5 didn't show up, but it is the southernmost row of trailers is actually in the R-5 district. Going forward with enforcement, we would establish the setbacks requirements that must be met to comply with all the requirements of the time of construction. We're well into that analysis. If we're going to go forward, we would begin immediate discussion and enforcement to bring the parks into compliance with those conditions. Require removal of all additions that are nuisance. Inspect all units that have been structurally altered and require permits for code compliance. We'd like to require that all replacement units in the park meet the setbacks when they're moved in. Require all units that are vacated be inspected for code compliance so that we can determine if they're a public nuisance and/or require permits to meet code compliance before reoccupancy. Require the internal streets to be opened and repaired so that we can get more fire access in there as it's supposed to be. Require accessory structures and additions to be removed or constructed for code. We'd like to consider an ordinance change so that there's a permit for installation of new units so that we can go in and look at them before they're placed within the mobile home park. That would allow us to look at the condition of the unit and where it's set to make sure it does meet the setback requirements. This is going to have an impact on occupants as we've seen, as we go through the Fort Des Moines process of bringing that park into compliance. It is having an impact on the residents. We would see using a phased-in compliance over a number of years with a compliance plan, allowing appeals for variances of setbacks and bring the parks into reasonable approval or get the units removed. We would use an outreach to occupants to allow adequate time to relocate using service providers. We've done some of that with Fort Des Moines. It's working to the best of our ability. We're getting the service providers in there, working with legal aid, and trying to transition the occupants into better living conditions. Staff commitment, if we're going to take on Oak Hill, we look at two weeks of initial inspection. That would include an or more than one inspector going in and looking at each mobile home unit. Two weeks of office time would be necessary to complete research, send notices. A week to complete sending zoning enforcement notice, that would be separate. That's the land use piece on the separation and setbacks. It would take at least a month of one inspector's time to complete the follow-up inspections and enforcement activity. Somewhere in the range of two weeks of a supervisor's time to oversee the completion of the enforcement activities. Radio City, of course, is going to be a more intense because there's more, time intense because there are more units. We're looking at seven weeks of initial inspections, 14 weeks of office time, a week to complete sending the zoning enforcement notice, about two months of time to complete the follow-up inspections, and somewhere in the two-week range for supervisor's time to oversee the process. Impact on staff, this is going to impact staff drastically. Enforcement effort would possibly delay service in other areas. Inspections would be pushed back when we did the initial inspections going into those parks, and putting that much time into it would push other inspections back. Could increase staff time and board adjustment appeals if that's the direction the property owner wants to go. Could affect ongoing neighborhood zoning issues such as illegal business operations and backyards that we were trying, that was one of our plans to get going. Could be a phased-in effort, taking one mobile home park at a time, getting maybe mobile or Oak Hill under notice and getting that one started, and then taking on Radio City and sort of phasing it through a system. So staff is recommended moving forward with enforcement, and we would like council direction at this point.
All right. Brian?
Thanks, Mayor. Wonderful job. I read it over the weekend. I think enforcement is very much needed here. I appreciate the efforts. It looks to me like if we have 34 in Oak Hill, that you had said that in the presentation up to half of them would be affected and not be able to stay because of separations?
Separations and condition, yes.
And I, my opinion is, and I, you know, I can't speak for Radio City or Bob, but we need to move forward in a very judicious way, but at the same time, make sure that the residents are aware of what's going on, they know about what their options are, and anybody that would be affected. I don't really have a timeframe in terms of, you know, five years being the out, but between now and five years, there's no reason we can't work with people and take our time to get it done. It's my intent to transition the property. I mean, I think it's a terrible use for that particular property. It's in terrible condition, and at the same time, we have to be aware that there's people living there that may not have immediately other places to go. So I'd very much look forward to enforcement, but in a way that puts everybody on notice and maybe learn from the experience at Fort Des Moines that, you know, we can't just depend on the landlord to, you know, make sure that things get done. We have to actually make sure they get done, and that's not anything other than he assured us, there are signed documents at Fort Des Moines, but maybe do a yearly inspection or figure out a way to make sure what's agreed to, and then also have some kind of global agreement where everybody is at the table, the landlord, us, and the residents to figure out a way to make sure everybody's informed. So I say go forward the enforcement, definitely.
Christine?
Some questions and then some comments maybe here. In both Oak Hill and Radio City, the owner of the trailers, who actually owns them? Are they sold on contract by the landlord that actually owns the trailer park, or are they other people that have owned the trailers previously?
That's a good question, and it varies trailer to trailer. They rent the land and most own in some respects that, or they believe they own the trailer. It is either purchased from the owner of the park or in some cases from the previous title holder of the trailer. Part of the problem in enforcement is looking at the title to the trailer and determining who all needs notice. It isn't as clean-cut as real estate where you have documents recorded and you can sort of see the path of ownership. These are actually vehicles, and they're sold as a vehicle, like a title to a car. And so it becomes a little more difficult, and people will sell them on a real estate contract that isn't exactly the way you're supposed to sell it so people believe they're buying it, although it should be done as a commercial transaction like you would buy a car. So sorting that out becomes sort of the enforcement problem. We can do it, that's the time-consuming part, but we would do it for each trailer and then go back and see who needs to be notified of violations so that whoever has actual title would get notice.
Then going back to your comment about developing an ordinance and a permit would be required when a new trailer was to be placed in a trailer park. Can we talk a little bit about that? Because I know the Fort Des Moines project, for example, he had signed an agreement to have that rectified within three years, but during that time period, he actually resold some of those trailers. And, you know, so that's, I think, the likelihood of a new trailer being placed in there in some of those parks is just, who would put a new trailer in those parks? They just are dumps.
I don't think in some of those lots and locations, because of the enforcement action we're going to do and the setbacks and the, quite frankly, deteriorated infrastructure of the parks, I don't think you could.
I don't, yeah.
But at the same time, I think this moving forward is a good solution to maybe others that maybe have in these.
Well, I like to have in the permit. I mean, I'm supportive of the permit, but I guess what I also would like to see it expanded to include, even if there's a transfer.
Yeah, I believe that's in there also. If they sell, that we get in and do an inspection as they transfer title, even if they're just sitting there. That was one of our goals. I'm looking to legal to make sure we can do that type of ordinance change, but that would be our goal, is the owner would have to allow us in to do an inspection before the next owner moves in, just to make sure that it's safe for the next person to move into it.
Well, I guess where I'm at, I just want to make it really clear. I think it's deplorable what these landlords have done. I think the city should be very aggressive in dealing with them. I don't, I mean, the Army Post Park is a prime example. He was given three years. He did not notify the residents, and he's, they're taking advantage of the poorest of the poor, and a lot of them don't speak English. And from the city's perspective, I think we need to be very, very aggressive in dealing with them. I don't care who they are. A lot of them are Des Moines people. I'd, you know, put their names on the front page of the paper. They deserve it because they have been just really taking advantage. I mean, stop and think about the money that Army Post, this landlord made with all those illegally placed trailers after he had signed a document saying, I mean, I calculated based upon a rough estimate, it was probably $300,000-plus.
We did that on Friday.
Is it, am I right, am I close?
Thursday or Friday. We, yeah.
$300,000.
I mean, it was.
That's unbelievable.
We've got a couple more council members that might speak, so. Done?
I'm fine.
Skip?
I'm just curious. At the end of the day, wouldn't the property owner of the mobile home park ultimately be responsible for the safety of the people that are there?
That's a difficult question. He rents the land and in some respects doesn't own the trailer, arguably, if he sold it on contract. He is responsible for the distances that they're placed. That's his decision, his responsibility for how close they are together, his roadways being open. Yes, those are absolutely his responsibility. If he was responsible, in my opinion, he would make sure that the units were safe within his park also.
I would think then that for expediency, we should go after the property owner on the external safety issues. It's the easiest one to identify, and it'll probably mean some of the units are going to have to be removed to keep the spacing in there, but I would think that that would be the easiest way to go after it.
And that would be the way we would do it from the zoning aspect, is that they're too close and they need to be spread out to the distance, which would cause some of them to be removed to make that. And the spacing between the units is absolutely a safety issue. The reason that the spacing is in place is to make sure fires don't jump between units and to make sure there's adequate room around them to get, to them to fight the fire. And so, you're right, that is the property owner's absolutely responsibility to make sure the spacing is there for safety.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, I certainly agree with all the efforts that's been put in here to try to improve this and make it a more safety issue. I just can't believe some of those, with that eight-foot separation, you know, that goes back a long ways, and they're just right on your front door if you're only eight foot apart. We've had a lot of complaints from people along Seneca there. We also got a problem, of course, I think, with Seneca apartments, that we've been a lot of police calls and that out there, so. And we've had situations where there's been raw sewage in the Radio City area. They haven't taken care of that. The streets are in terrible condition. There's just, there's not too much you can say positive about that, other than some people, I guess, are off of the streets and living in some of those trailers.
Can I ask one other?
Please.
I am concerned about the emphasis put on staff time in here and just laying out that it's going to impact other services provided. Have we explored other ways to address the problem, i.e., working to hire somebody that could come in and on a contractual basis? I'm, I would be, I guess I'm thinking that there might be support within the community to help fund that position. There would be several different avenues you could explore, but I'd like to explore them.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, council members, you're correct. There is a very significant staffing impact, and Sue has made mention of that in her presentation. Essentially, it means that we have to, if you want to maintain level of service in the other areas while we do this, we've got to add some sort of resource, whether it's through a contract position or establishing a staff position or whatever would make sense. And if you'd like us to look at that, we certainly can. But I, but the caution is that we can't really increase our total budget allocation, so what we're really going to have to do is look across the organization and see, can we shift some resources into that? I'm happy to look at that.
What I'm asking, is there the ability to hire somebody on a contract basis that would be project-specific so that you would, it would not be an addition of an FTE, but it would be contractual so that they would just work on this project? And I'm just thinking from, I know the supervision and the legal, I'm assuming that we could do that?
I think it's a matter of finding somebody that has the skill set and the expertise to do the inspections. That's a rather specialized area, so going out and finding somebody in the labor market that has that skill. So you, what might be more feasible would be to find some other areas that we have to backfill and use that kind of a system to do that. So maybe we use our trained, experienced inspectors in this task and then backfill other areas that they have to vacate in order to do the task.
Sue Ann, I don't, I would not assume that you'd be looking at just these two trailer parks. You'd be inspecting all of them citywide?
My anticipation would be that we do these two, and as other parks come to our attention as being as bad as these, we would work those in, and it would be an ongoing park-by-park effort.
Why not start inspecting them all and be proactive? I would hate to see any of them go downhill.
Could I jump in on that, just, Mr. Moore?
How many parks do we have?
I think it's a great point, Mr. Moore, and I think it is ultimately, it's a resource issue. I think what Sue Ann has laid out here is a systematic process that would eventually get to all of them, but if we try to tackle them all at once and then we can't really get them done, we're not going to serve anybody.
What I'm getting at is, I believe they should all be inspected, and if that's the case, we ought to be looking at an FTE, that that's what they specialize in.
Well, once you start the inspection, you've got to be prepared to follow through with it, so you can't just inspect and say, we'll get, we'll get back to you with enforcement activities. It's, Mr. Moore, council members, it's a question of resource. And we have so many of these around the city, frankly, that if we start inspecting all of them, the amount of resource is really quite substantial. And I think, I think under this effort, what did you tell me the other day, Sue Ann, in order to do these two, it's really the equivalent of maybe one person for a year.
A year.
It took, and it, it took a long time just having the discussion. We started this probably right after I got on the council. I mean, we have been working, my neighborhood's out here, but we've been working on this for five years, and it's been up and down, and, but the question is, and I do have some comments, Skip, if you're down, or did you have more?
Well, I just wanted to point out, I think there may be a legal issue there if we start targeting just certain businesses, not all of them, and Sue Ann did say it'd be an annual inspection, and I'm just thinking that we need to take, I realize it's a resource issue, but I think we need to take a look at an FTE on this, that's what they're going to specialize in, they're going to do.
You're talking about a full-time city person?
Yes. Well, that's what, the effort that Sue Ann has laid out for the two parks is one full-time equivalent position in effect for a year. And so as you do those two and then you go on to others, you're going to need to make, I mean, you're not far off, Skip, in terms of that, that's the kind of, that's the kind of resource allocation you're going to have just to maintain the effort that she's outlined here.
Sue Ann, just a quick question, and I'm going to turn it back over to Brian here for a second. On the zoning maps that you have put before us for both of these properties, especially on Oak Hill, one would, just in real quick observation of that, almost well over half of those units are in violation as we speak.
Correct.
And so, not knowing what the history of this is, one would think that those could be, if possible, be brought in compliance or asked to be brought in compliance in a very short period of time without even an inspection on them.
Correct. The zoning notice would go out to the landowner saying, these are placed in violation of the setback, and you need to remove those immediately. Immediately, of course, being with the staff effort to do outreach upfront and work through the process of relocating those, those people and the occupants over a period of time.
And I've watched the two times we've dealt with this, that I've been on the council, it's been very, very intense and very, very much a complicated affair dealing with people that are maybe living there that didn't know they were living there illegally or placed in a trailer that's illegally there, so it's very complicated in that sense, I think.
Well, we have to have some people go out with some compassion, because as Ms. Hensley pointed out, I mean, there's some people that have been wronged here, and it wasn't any fault of their own, but I think that we have a responsibility as a city to enforce this and, you know, to have these folks living in substandard places, number one, and ones that don't meet many sections of the code, and especially this one. I mean, this would be an easy enough one to give pretty quick notice. The other one, Radio City, be interesting to, I guess, to walk that one. It doesn't look like that, that one, the majority of those units could be, that same issue exists exactly in a way that we could resolve a lot of the problem.
But there are a lot of them in real poor condition.
Right.
Yeah.
You'd basically lose all of the units along Seneca because they aren't going to be able to be put there. The units that are on the southernmost have to meet the R-5, and that's a whole different analysis on screening and conditions, and so those would be looked at differently. We figure about half of those trailers would have to go to meet even the eight-foot separation and setbacks. And to speak to the comments about outreach to the tenants and occupants, when we did Fort Des Moines and found out that the owner hadn't been hadn't been giving notice and that the occupants didn't know what was going on, the city, we took it upon ourselves to set up an outreach with service providers that went door-to-door with interpreters to set up a meeting so that we could explain what was happening and provide them resources and give them an indication of timelines, brought in legal aid to help so that they have adequate representation. And of course, we would follow that model with these. But instead of waiting to the back end when the landlord hasn't done due diligence or the owner hasn't done due diligence, we would do it on the front end and make sure that we're working through the issues with the occupants on the front end over a period of time so that we aren't getting this at the back end where tenants are confused and don't understand. So.
Do we know?
We would do that this time in both these cases.
Exactly, upfront.
Brian, I'm going to turn back to you.
Do we know who the owners are then of the parks themselves? I think we talked about Oak Hill being in a trust.
The property owner of Oak Hill is deceased and it's in an estate.
Estate.
Yes. So we would notify the executor of the estate.
And the reason I ask is because, and the second question I have before I follow up on that is, back in Oak Hill, is that, is the car lot legal?
The car lot is not legal.
Okay.
Let me, let me explain. It had legal non-conforming status to be there, but the fact that they have violated the legal non-conforming status by expanding the car lot, actually selling cars within the mobile home park itself and parking cars all over the place expands the legal non-conforming and they lose legal non-conforming rights. We took them to court several years ago to try and get them to, you know, park where they're supposed to and be in compliance, and they didn't do it. So notice has recently gone out saying, you've now lost legal non-conforming status.
That's great.
And you need to shut down.
That's great. That's accurate.
So, kind of all comes together in a good way on this one.
Now, is it the same landlord that owns the car lot?
Yeah. The same people.
Yes.
Okay.
Same trust.
And the reason I ask about the trust or the estate is that we reach out to them first and say, can we do this in a, can we do this in a manner that's going to have a global settlement and have the effect of not harming the residents? And I think in our previous conversations, you had stated that you had reached out to them and they seemed willing to deal. So, or willing to talk.
They were asking when the city was going to buy them out. So that's, that was their response.
Actually.
Yes, Mr. Meyer.
Let's turn it over to city manager. Maybe he has a comment.
Actually, thank you, Mr. Meyer. I just want to acknowledge, this is really a great piece of work on the part of Sue Ann Donovan and her staff. I see Steve Benson out there. This is really well done. I know they spent an enormous amount of time. It sounds to me, just to recap what I've heard you all say, is you want us to go forward essentially as it's recommended here with this effort. You also ask us to take a look at the resource issues that are associated with this, and we'll do that. And we'll see what we can do to make sure we don't fall behind in other zoning enforcement areas as we go forward with this. And to Mr. Meyer's question, we'll always look at those other options that might even expedite it further.
If we bought them out, it'd be a lot less staff.
That would be a lot less staff. That's right.
Time.
The Oak Hill piece, it looks like we could resolve half to two-thirds of that problem, just if there's enforcement capabilities here, without even have to, just from setbacks.
Correct. That would be our initial notice, would be the zoning piece.
Because then you wouldn't even have to inspect them. They just got to go. But any rate, short of anybody, anything else, Brian, I understand that there may be a few folks here that probably generally would be waiting for the public comment, but since they're here for this particular issue, if they would like to speak, maybe we ought to give them a quick moment now if the council's okay with that, rather than wait until the end.
I think that'd be helpful, I think.
All right. Are there any folks here, from the neighborhoods that would like to speak to the, these mobile home park issues?
Mayor Jim Ballard at 4007 Southeast 26 with Easter Lake and Coalition of South Side, I'm the chairman. Support encouraged by this. I think some excellent thoughts. And as a, send I recently retired person, I'm wondering, as a community, if there's places to reach out for like some of this research or those kinds of things to some of the retired people to help do some of this background to save on staff time?
Are you volunteering since you retired?
It may be interesting. I mean, it certainly seems like something I don't, nobody's ever talked about that I've ever heard. It seems like a good way to utilize some of the resources in the community. So, but I support the actions here. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor County, members of the council. My name is Mel Pins. I live at 210 East Bundy Avenue, just off Army Post Road on the south side. President of Somerset Neighborhood Association, also vice chair of the Cessna Coalition. I just, I was happy to hear your discussion this morning. Sometimes I use some pretty direct terms, but I like what Christine said. Some of these trailer parks are basically dumps. I have no problem with affordable housing, no problem with low-income housing. Most of the time, those have rules that go with them, whether you're Section 8, Section 42, what have you. But I think the issue we've got here in Des Moines, and if we look at the big picture, which is what I try to do, Des Moines is part of the Capital Core Initiative. We are the core of this metro. And as part of the Capital Core Initiative, we need to have strong neighborhoods. And those neighborhoods can be diverse in income, in their makeup, but they need to attract people that want to live and remain in those neighborhoods. And unfortunately, in some areas of the city, particularly my ward on the southeast side, we have some areas and some neighborhoods where a lot of the dilapidated, rundown trailer parks are located. And those unfortunately become kind of the stereotypes for an entire area. And I find that unfortunate. I live in a nice neighborhood, but Army Post Trailer Park sits on my doorstep. I had some relatives that recently visited our home, had never been there, driving to our house. They said, gosh, I wondered what neighborhood we were getting into coming over here. I really didn't like to hear that because I am proud of our city and I do like to live here. So I really applaud you for looking at this issue. I know this is a tough one. But as Brian kind of alluded to, this even goes back before him. When that seat was open for council, eight folks ran for that seat. And Jim Ballard, myself, and some other neighborhood leaders put together some forums to get these eight people figured out on what they were going to do if they were going to be our next council person. And improving our street infrastructure was an important thing. And Brian and you all have worked on that. Working on our commercial corridors, improving those, Brian's worked on that, so have you. The trailer parks was right in there. I can bring out the cards we used for the primaries. And we had some real direct questions about those. And again, I don't have a problem with manufactured housing. You know, South Ridge Estates and some of these others, they're probably fine. And I know a lot of times with enforcement, you can't go inspect every single type of a business in the city and compare them all. You have to look at where your problems are first. I like what Skip said about, you know, let's try to get them all inspected. But it's pretty obvious in, you know, kind of glaring detail where the real problems are here to start with. In summary, I really think these issues hurt our property values citywide. I'm going to be blatant about that. Yes, some of it's about property values. But in the end run, it's really about where's Des Moines going to be 10, 20, even 50 years from now? These things have been here 60 years. So I think you can look ahead 50 years. Where will we be? Will these things still be here? If we don't do anything, I think they probably would be. Not sure how you get worse than dilapidated, but that's my, where we get. So I want to really thank the staff for their work to date. You know, I have a habit of calling Sue Ann here and there on issues, but I've even told her, you know, I want to work on priorities. And this is a priority. So I want to thank staff for that. Thank you for your discussion and I encourage you to support the enforcement efforts here. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I want to thank neighborhood folks for speaking out on this issue. I think it gives us a sense where everybody down there is, where their minds are in thinking on this process. So I appreciate it very much for coming down. Hopefully, we'll be able to move forward, Mr. Manager, and begin action on these projects. And short of that, let's, getting it done, should I say, let's move forward and begin speaking, I think it's the neighborhood snow removal program, residential snow.
Good morning. My name is Pat Kizitz. I'm the deputy public works director for the city of Des Moines. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the story you're about to hear is true. Despite season-high temperatures today, we're going to be returning to near-normal winter precipitation this winter with temperatures slightly above. With that, we will again have those demands for improved snow removal in the city of Des Moines. We believe we have a program that can begin to address those concerns. With me today, I have Bruce Braun, our sewer maintenance administrator, and Sarah Tease, our street maintenance administrator. The two people that have worked on this program for several years now and will be in charge of implementing it. At the heart of this program is a technological advancement, a side-mounted, hydraulically operated wing plow that allows us to do in two passes what normally took three. Technological advancements have helped us throughout the years in public works, provide improved services to the citizens of Des Moines. In the upper left-hand corner, we see a slipform curb machine that allows us to pour a continuous line of curb without the time-consuming, hand-constructed wooden frames that were needed in the past. On the right, on top, we see jet vector equipment. This equipment not only can cut roots now, it can clean the sewer and foam those roots to avoid and retard regrowth, which causes backups. The bottom half, you'll recognize our one-arm units that helped us automate solid waste collection, significantly improving efficiency and reducing injuries. With that, it took some change on the part of residents. They had to get used to some different cycles. They had to get used to pay-as-you-throw and the use of those carts. But by doing that change, we were able to maintain a more efficient operation in a very sustainable way. Now in the right-hand bottom, we see the wing plow has come. And with that, something already used on the arterial roads, the snow routes, we see an advancement for our residentials. These are the program improvements that we think we can bring to residential snow removal. Improves plowing efficiency, improved service, reduce street maintenance, improve motor safety, and reduce program costs. And we'll talk about that in just a few minutes. This is important because the residents recognize the need for this in the city of Des Moines and they've been asking for it. This is the result of the multi-voting technique that was used in the budget workshops last fall, where the citizens reminded us in the workshops that snow removal, neighborhood snow removal is number one, that pothole patching and street resurfacing are also critical needs. This was reinforced in the citizen survey. This being a summary chart here that shows in the upper left, exceeding expectations, these are areas of our customer service and we're pleased to see that the citizens appreciate that. But in the lower right-hand corner, we see opportunities for improvement. And generally, these are resource-starred areas. Two of the significant ones there are snow removal in your neighborhood, in the condition of streets in your neighborhood, we think we can positively impact with the program we're about to tell you about. So with that, I'd like to have Bruce Braun tell you exactly how this technological improvement is going to help us improve overall quality and efficiency of neighborhood snow removal.
Good morning. Thank you, Pat. As Pat mentioned, the public works department has embraced changing technology throughout the years to improve our operations. And in my 24 years involved in snow and ice control operations, I can remember when we first got started, we had equipment, although not quite as old as the ones shown on the left-hand picture there. We did have trucks that had straight sticks. They didn't have power steering. They had this single plow up front. So compare that to what we're using today of the photo on the right where we have the wing plow. In fact, we're pilot testing a couple of units that are, have laser-guided wing plow system where the operators have a laser shooting out there so they can see where the end of their wing plow would be in relationship to the curb. Now with this more efficient equipment, we are able to reduce our plowing time by about 33%. And this is because with the new wing plows, we can go down, as Pat mentioned, in two passes down a street in which we previously had to go down with three passes with the old newer plow. This animation kind of will show you what I mean with the old plow. We normally had to go down the center of the street, turn around, go up one side, and then come back down the other side. So a typical street would take three passes. With the wing plow, as you'll see in this animation here, we can do the same street in two passes, hence the savings of about a third in our time and effort on that street. So just technology alone isn't enough to make this program work. As you saw, the plow is quite a bit wider. And to use that plow effectively, we need to have cars off the street so that we can get around the streets without having to raise the wing plow. As you'll see on the left-hand picture there, that's a picture of a street where parking is allowed and our plows go down there. However, with the cars parked there, we leave mounds of snow around the cars. The snow gets compacted because we can't get all that off during the plowing operation. The photo on the right is from the Waterbury neighborhood, taken the same day. And they were participating in the program. And as you can see there, the street was able to be plowed curb to curb, getting down to bare pavement. This just shows the problem we have with a car on the street with a wing plow. The wing comes up, he has to raise the plow, go up around the car, put the wing back down, and then continue on his way. And as you'll see there, we leave a pile of snow around the car and can't clear out in front of the driveways as well as we would like to, causing a problem for the resident. Now, we've been looking at this for quite a long time. In fact, we started with a pilot program about four and a half years ago in a single neighborhood, and that was in the Waterbury neighborhood. And council member Hensley took a lot of calls on that and helped to make this an effective program. In fact, it was so effective that it's grown throughout the last four years, where we currently have 21 neighborhoods participating. And we appreciate the help of all the other council members that have helped make this program a success also. Some of the key points that we'd like to present to you today are the improved residential snow removal from this program, parking restrictions during the plowing operations that will be needed, how we can reduce program costs with the program, extensive education program that will be needed for the residents, how we will give warnings instead of tickets for the first two storms for the initiation of the program. And none of this program will affect the current policies on the snow routes. We'll still not allow parking on snow routes where we're plowing and nothing changes with those. To help us look at this, to see if it would be good for the city, a focus group was, started meeting in December of 2011. And the focus group is composed of known leader, neighborhood leaders that have helped us in the past to look at initiatives to make our operations more effective. And these leaders were selected from areas of the city where we currently were doing the no parking initiative, as well as areas that don't have no parking currently. And also, we had some neighborhood representation from the areas of the city where there's a high density of multifamily structures with limited off-street parking. The goal of the focus group was to help explore the feasibility of going citywide with implementation of a no parking ban during snow removal. Some of the issues that the focus group looked like were, as I mentioned, the benefit to the Des Moines residents, what is the benefit for them, proposed parking restrictions, how do we handle the high-density, limited off-street parking areas of the city, what education program will be needed, and what type of parking enforcement. And after seven months of meeting, the focus group recommended that the program be implemented citywide with special consideration for high-density areas with limited off-street parking. And Sarah Tease will now talk about the operational aspects of the program.
Some of the benefits of this program for the citizens of Des Moines is better quality, faster snow removal, will reduce the rework, which is when the parked car moves and we have to go back out to the neighborhood to clear it curb to curb. We get into the neighborhood sooner because there's no parked cars in the area. So we get to remove the snow before the cars pack it down, reducing the snow buildup. And the reduced amount of snow on the street reduces the potholes that form in the spring. I noticed today we have Mel Pins, the president of the Somerset Neighborhood Association with us today. I'd like to quote him. He told us, quote, "Feedback I received from residents was very supportive as our streets were cleared with greater effectiveness, resulting in safer streets and more room to park later as there were no snow islands or icebergs left around the parked cars." And this is a slide that shows when the car moves and then we redeploy a snow plow to the neighborhood to clear it curb to curb, the resident has already cleared their driveway and then we come back and fill it with a new windrow. So he has to clear his driveway once again to get his car in and out. As I mentioned, we believe there'll be reduced potholes because of this program. We reduce the amount of water that's on the street. We reduce the amount of water that's on the street, which will seep into the small cracks in the street and overnight refreeze and pop, and crack the asphalt or concrete further. Both the asphalt and concrete paving associations agree that reducing the snow buildup is beneficial to the pavement lifecycle. So the proposed parking restrictions are no parking citywide on residential streets, with one exception for the special odd-even parking restrictions in the high-density, limited off-street parking areas. And currently, there's no parking on snow routes when the snow ordinance is in effect, and we plan to continue that there'll be no changes to the snow routes. So in this special odd-even parking restriction, the neighborhoods that we found had the highest density of multifamily structures with limited off-street parking were Carpenter, Drake, Drake Park, Riverbend, and Sherman Hill. In those five neighborhoods, we propose doing an odd-even parking situation, where on the odd date, so in this example, January 1st, the cars all park on the odd side of the street. And then we will plow during the day shift from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., giving the residents the overnight hours to move for the even date to the even side of the street, and then we'll go back and plow at 7:00 a.m. on the other side of the street. It's not extremely efficient for us to redeploy to this neighborhood, but it is the only way we could find to make it work for these neighborhoods that just don't have even the land to build for off-street parking. We are planning for an extensive education program. We're going to call it Nowhere to Go Before the Snow. We plan to advertise this, we're working with IT to set up on the homepage, the link that says "Show Me My House." It will tell the residents if they are on a snow route, if their neighborhood is in one of the special odd-even parking spaces, or if they're just part of the larger part of the city and no parking's allowed during snow. We've reserved the month of October for the Waterworks insert. We plan to get an article in the city newsletter and to provide articles to the neighborhood leaders to add to their newsletters if they want to reprint it. We are hoping to get some media coverage for this new program, and as Bruce mentioned, we're going to do warnings for the first two snow events. That'll also add to the education, so people won't get a ticket before they know about this program. Some possible parking alternatives are our standard operating procedures. We clear all the snow off of the snow routes before we move into the residential neighborhoods. That will allow the, the snow routes will be available for parking by the time we move into the residential streets. We also will allow for property access off of the alleys, as we'll be plowing the alleys more frequently. Some neighborhoods have suggested that, have commented that they've worked out a deal between neighbors to, with permission, park in a neighbor's driveway. Also, they can obtain permission from businesses, schools, churches, and parks in their neighborhood to park in those lots until their street is cleared and they can move back to the residential For parking enforcement, our plan is to warn for the first two snow events, so they shouldn't get tickets on residential streets. We're still going to treat the snow routes as we have every year. Nothing's changed there. If you park on a snow route, you're still going to get a ticket. After the first two events, we're going to begin ticketing citywide. It's a $35 illegal parking fee, and we'll be towing as needed, probably in the odd-even areas where we expect to have the most issue with cars. If we just cannot get a plow down the street, we will plan to tow. The way that the residents will be noticed to know that they cannot park on the residential street, we'll be using local media, putting out our press releases like we do every, every winter, saying no parking's allowed on snow routes. Now we'll include one that says no parking's allowed on residential streets. We will work with the PIO to get a notice on Channel 7. We will use the city website, the homepage picture changes when we're in snow plow operations to say the snow ordinance is in effect. And we'll now designate between when we're plowing on snow routes and when we're plowing citywide on the residential streets. And we'll continue to give ongoing snow removal information on that homepage. We also have email and text messaging subscription services. If anyone wants to sign up for that, they can get a text message letting them know when they, when parking is prohibited, and also when parking is all clear, when they're free to move their car back to the residential streets. We'll also be doing social media via Facebook and Twitter. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Pat to talk about the budget impacts.
Sarah, before you take off, I would just suggest the earlier, and I know that you've thought about this because it looks like your ideas are very extensive, but the sooner we do it, the better, because we don't want to be in the middle of the snow season and having extensive discussions. I know that Wendy, I see her sitting back here, had some concerns last year about some of this stuff, so I think the earlier we can get the message out, the better.
Excellent suggestion.
Mr. Mayor, we've begun to meet with the presidents of the special odd-even area where we think the education is going to be the most difficult, but citywide, we are putting those materials together now. Tonight, we'll be asking for a first reading on this, and with that, then we'll go into a full-court press to start getting all those materials and programs formed, ready for implementation.
Is it correct that, I thought I read in the blue letter, that we will do plowing for two-inch snowstorms?
Thank you. We believe, and I'll mention this in just a minute, that while we see savings in this program due to both the wing plow and the no parking on the street, we are recommending, in response to citizen requests in the past, to improve the quality of snow removal by reinvesting and plowing more often, yes. Currently, the policy we have passed November 5, 1984, the reason I remember that is because I was here and helped write the thing, it's, it called for plowing at four inches in the residential. At that time, it reflected the equipment we had, it reflected the programs and materials. All that has changed today, and we believe we can do it at two inches, which will have us out there more often. Now, what I'd like to share with you are some budget impacts. This is what we see as some budget impacts, and we think they're mostly going to be positive. We see a reduced fuel consumption, two versus three passes, reduce vehicle maintenance, less time out there on the street, reduce damage to parked cars, obviously that they're not on the street, and we have hit them in the past, reduce rework, and reduce pothole patching. You know, that pothole, you get that water that trickles down during the day because of snow residue on the street, freezes at night, fractures, pops it, normal traffic, knocks it out. So we see those as potential budget impacts, but the real numbers come like this. When we look at our actual cost over the last five years in residential snow plowing operations, we see that we can save with this reduced number of passes about $78,000 per event, giving us a total reduction of about 390 over five events, which is the normal number of times we plow residential streets. But as Councilwoman Hensley points out, we are looking at reducing the number of inches at which we will plow. And so we're reinvesting, recommending reinvesting that money, so we're plowing at two inches instead of four. Basically, you're talking about a couple more plow events a year. You know, once it goes above four inches, then, you know, it's just like the old program, you know, you get an eight-inch storm. But here, we're talking about the difference between two and four inches. So we're looking at that, and with that, we would see it would probably reduce the savings down about $100,000. Now, that savings really doesn't come as, you know, let's just take this off of the public works budget. What it's going to be is a reduction in the amount of time built up by our staff as they go into spring operations. We don't have to work that time back off. So today, public comment has been this. We've had the focus group Bruce mentioned, we've been before the NRB, the Des Moines Neighbors, very supportive organizations. They represent a lot of people who have these concerns about snow removal. We've been before the Planning and Zoning Board, Traffic Safety Committee. We've written the neighborhood leaders twice, have gotten comments back from them, both positive and some with some concerns. Not everybody is sold on this. This will take some adjustment. But we are committed, I know that the presidents of the five even odd areas are, in the citywide, we've gotten very positive response from the neighborhood leaders to implement this program. And so we are committed to doing this. We'll continue to work with those that have concerns, talking to them about the parking alternatives that Sarah mentioned, and doing everything we can to help them see their way. But there will be an adjustment here, but it will enable us to improve service and keep this program sustainable.
Pat, when you talk about neighborhood leaders, out of, we've got 57 neighborhoods, how many neighborhoods actually participated in these focus groups?
Thank you. I'd say that we had probably five or six. We had Riverbend, Easter Lake, Somerset, Drake area, and so we had a number of them that were both already involved in the program because that's what we were looking for. What more do we have to be doing here? What things do we have to be considering? And so that's how we were kind of selected, and these were people that we'd worked with in the past that have helped us through some progressive ideas like automated solid waste collection and that. So these were the kind of comments, generally very supportive. There are some areas of concern, we'll continue to work with them. So what's next? Tonight, we come to you with a request to approve first reading. We recommend three readings because we think there'll be time for people to warm up to this. Second reading August 13th, third reading on the 27th. That'll include a revision of this policy then to reflect the ordinance changes of plowing at two inches at residential instead of four. And with that, we will kick off, I think, what'll be an unprecedented education campaign. We know what we have been through in the 21, and we know what it's going to take to try and get this word out. You will take calls, we will take calls. We will do our best to improve the overall quality of snow removal and do it as efficiently as we can. So with that, what questions can we answer for you?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Pat, everybody, thank you very much. All right. We have one more subject to cover, which will be the right-of-way management code review.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Jeb Brewer is going to do this, and this is a part of our program that doesn't get a whole lot of notoriety, but it's particularly important, and it's been precipitated by a request from Wellmark. I'll let Jeb kind of take it from there.
Morning, Mayor, members of council. Jeb Brewer, city engineer. Today, just want to take a few minutes to talk about proposed updates to our existing city ordinance for right-of-way management. Just briefly, that we had, we've had an ordinance since 1998 regarding to regulate who goes into the right-of-way. I want to emphasize, this really isn't related to franchise fees, but this is related to who is allowed to use our right-of-way for various facilities, utilities, and such sorts. Recently, Wellmark came in and wanted to install about 10 miles in our right-of-way, and our current ordinance doesn't have a category for them to use that. That precipitated us reviewing the ordinance. And what are the overall public interest for this ordinance? Well, essentially, we want to make sure that proper installation of facilities, and then if there are costs associated with the city, that those are appropriately recovered. Just in brief, right-of-way is more than just a street area, it also includes the border areas. Right-of-way includes such things as streets, sidewalks, streetlights, traffic signal signs, and a host of users. The thing that's important to remember is that right-of-way is a limited resource. We don't buy very much right-of-way when we do, it's very expensive. And since it is a limited resource, if you allow somebody in there and they occupy that space, that space is no longer available for some other use, so we do need to regulate This isn't related to franchise fees, but I, but we do recover some cost under this ordinance, but it's really costs associated with ensuring that companies have insurance and that they are properly coordinating their traffic impacts. And just to reiterate it, however, this isn't the franchise fee. The franchise fee issue is separate. Those fees are based upon state legislature or franchise agreements. These annual management fees that we do collect under this ordinance are quite modest, and 11, 12, we collected just over $150,000. Again, this ordinance and the proposals, changes we have are related to who is allowed to use the right-of-way. Well, who does use the right-of-way? Well, there are a lot of users of the right-of-way, maybe more than you would think, and we have well over a million linear feet of facilities in our right-of-way within the city. And so we need to have a system that who's going to go in there and where are they going to be. Those users can be categorized in two major groups. The first group is utilities, and the second group is non-unities. Well, utilities are those companies that directly offer services to the citizens, like phone service, gas and electric, and they're available to all citizens. And utilities have some special consideration because we are required by state to make our right-of-way accessible for their uses. Well, that brings us to the second group, which is really the thrust of the proposal proposed changes, and that's nonutility users. Nonutility users, there is a little more latitude for the city to regulate since they aren't, don't make services available to everybody. It's typically available only to private users. And those can be broken down into, our current ordinance has three categories of nonutility users. When we talk about across-the-street users, that's simply people who have facilities and they need to make access from one building to another, examples nationwide. There's campus users like Drake University and Grandview, and then there's wholesale users. Now, while our current ordinance does allow for a number of nonutility users, there is a category which Wellmark wants to use, which it doesn't allow, and we're calling this the corporate crosstown user. Wellmark's proposal was, as I mentioned, 10 miles of facilities, it's to connect their downtown headquarters to a facility outside the city of Des Moines, in Altoona, as a facility they wouldn't actually own. And so it's extensive, and it doesn't meet any of the current categories that the city ordinance allows for installation of utilities. So we reviewed the ordinance, and we came up with some suggestions which we're presenting to you for consideration. And essentially, it does allow for that use, and it makes a few other changes that are necessary in order to clarify what's meant by crosstown user versus like a campus user. Briefly, what would be the impacts to proposed changes? Well, for utility users, there is no impact for the proposed changes. We're really just looking at nonutility users. And for any existing users, whether the utility or nonutilities, if they keep using their facilities as currently, there's no impact either. This is only for new uses or changes in uses. What would be the changes? Well, what we're recommending is that we add a category, which is down at the bottom, crosstown users. And since we are, would be allowing under the ordinance for this more extensive use, we felt that it's necessary for the city to add a requirement to crosstown users, which would be a deposit, a removal and restoration deposit. The concept here is that these companies, since they have a lot of facilities in our right-of-way, they may not want to use them anymore, the company may move or go bankrupt or some other financial situation, these facilities would be left in our right-of-way. And that would add some cost to the city and to other utility users, and so we recommend that they provide a restoration deposit, or in lieu of that, they can provide a bond to ensure that if they do stop using these facilities, that they can be appropriately removed. This is just sort of some of the criteria that we, we put forth, what would be necessary for the removal and restoration deposit. What are the impacts if they do use utilities there? Well, you know, these utilities are handholds and manholes, if there, if there's nobody there to maintain them, they can collapse, they can cause sinkholes, they can cause damage to our infrastructure and other utility companies. And if you have any underground construction and you, and you run onto an abandoned utility causes extensive delays because you have to identify, you can't just assume that's abandoned. It may be somebody else, an active user, that was mismarked, so it takes considerable amount of time. If we want this utility, this restoration deposit, essentially, if they leave their facilities in place that would allow us to access those funds to remove those facilities, if they remove them, the deposits return to them. There's really no income here, it's just to make sure that they are responsible. It also is a means to make sure that companies that are installing these facilities are responsible, financially responsible, because they'd have to come up with a deposit, or in lieu of that, a bond. I'm trying to go as fast as I can. Okay, and this is a summary, summary slide of impacts to current users, in which there are no impacts to current users if they keep their current facilities. The only impacts would be for new users, like corporate crosstown users, and we are recommending this removal, the restoration deposit be placed on wholesalers. Wholesalers are those users which are private companies that then lease their facilities as a third-party provider to other utility companies. And the concept is that of these private companies, we would want to make sure that they have the same financial capabilities as these corporate crosstown users. We would only require this deposit if the wholesalers come in with additional facilities. So essentially, if they already have them in there, we'd be grandfathered in for their existing facilities. What would be the benefits to the city by making these changes to the ordinances? Well, first of all, it would allow Wellmark to install the facilities that they've requested. And second of all, by having the restoration deposit, it would reduce the financial risk to the city by allowing this function. And thirdly, it's just updating the code to make it a little more clear for, for all users. That brings us to the last slide, which is most important. For council's consideration tonight is the first reading of these proposed changes. If council decides to enact these ordinance changes, then we would issue new licenses, as stated, Wellmark has already submitted. There are two other companies in addition to Wellmark that have, since we started these reviews, would like to put facilities in the right-of-way under this proposed changes. One of the users is interested in starting very quick. One of the users is interested in starting very quickly, and they, Friday, they did request a waiver of reading, but that's not on the agenda tonight. And then the third point, which I would like to leave you with, is not related to the ordinance changes at all, but really a direction where council may want to direct staff to look for further investigation. As I showed you, there are many users of the right-of-way, not just our franchise users. And there are costs that the city does incur, existing costs that we've incurred in the past and we continue to incur, which we would have an opportunity to try to recover those costs from these non-franchise users. If we were going to do that, we would need to make sure that those fees to recover those costs are compliant with the recent legal rulings, and that they would also need to be rigorously accounted for. But that could be some significant annual income to recover these costs the city currently incurs due to working and managing around these extensive right-of-way users. And so that would be something, if council's interested for staff, we could bring something back to try that process. It would take some significant work and take some time to implement it because it does need to be compliant with existing legal statutes and case law.
Question?
Mr. Mayor, did you want to make a comment real quickly?
Well, just, I, I understand right-of-way ordinance is probably not the most exciting thing you've ever had on your agenda before, but it is particularly of significance to us. And you think about this Wellmark request to run fiber optic cable roughly seven miles through our city, there are very significant impacts. Jeb just talked about it in somewhat of an understated way, but the cost of reviewing that fiber optic installation in our right-of-way and dealing with all the issues that relate to right-of-way management and impacts on the surrounding property owners, it is a key undertaking. And the issue that, that we want to make sure you understand is that there is a fairly significant cost that we incur as staff in reviewing those requests. And what Jeb just said there, and it's the last bullet point here, reviewing the annual management fee structure is particularly important. We're not trying to make money, but we want to be in a position that we can recover the costs that we incur in reviewing these quests, requests that come forward. So it's not part of your action tonight, but if you're so inclined and you could authorize us to go forward with that, it would be much appreciated. We'll then come back to you with some recommendations on changes in that fee structure to make sure we recover our cost.
Ms. Hensley?
A couple of comments. I, I support this, and I think it's extremely important that we do the fiscal analysis to make sure that we are covering the costs of it. I don't know what we're actually charging right now, but it's probably minimal.
It's like $150,000 a year.
$150,000 a year, okay. Particularly, when you look at the wholesale category and you've got them then working with third parties that are actually, they're making money off of, would be my guess. I just think that it's important that we actually cover the cost of it. The other thing, though, I'm just thinking of would be, Wellmark is a prime example because I don't know that we've had one like this before, but once it gets to the city boundaries of Des Moines, and then it crosses over into Altoona...
How's the interface work?
Yeah, how's the interface work? And are they going to be different than what we are? And is this something that we need to be talking with the Metro Advisory Council on, just to make sure there's some consistency? Because one of the things that you hear, I just want to make sure that we minimize the red tape and don't add to it.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, our ordinance only regulates what's in the corporate boundaries, but we're probably have a little more emphasis on our right-of-way management. Particularly downtown is very, very difficult, and of course, they're starting downtown. We have a lot of river crossings, so there's some things that make it necessary for Des Moines probably to have more extensive regulations in the suburbs. But, you know, we certainly would share with them. It'd be nice to have something that's consistent, you know, across the state even, as far as how this is put in. On this particular one, perhaps we can reach out to Altoona, as Christine has suggested, and just make sure they know what we're doing and see if they have an interest in looking at ordinance. And when they put these facilities in, they have to come to us. They're also going to have to be talking to the DOT because they cross DOT, they have to talk to railroads. It's not an easy task to put in a cable because there's so many different people. They may have private interests they have to get, so it's not likely they could ever have a one-stop shop to do this if they're going across boundaries.
And it might be helpful to put it on a MAC agenda and have Jeb make a quick presentation, let everybody know, because I think regionally heads up, here's what we're thinking. Anything else, anybody? All right, let's quickly, thank you, Jeb, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ask if there's anybody in the audience that has any comments. In addition, we had a couple earlier on regarding the mobile home parks. Seeing no one just jumping up to, run up to the podium here, we will look forward to seeing all of you here this evening. Thanks, we are adjourned.